Call attention or call this meeting of the Farmington School Board on Monday, March 27th, to order. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone, and guests from the learner showcase this evening. Looking forward to hearing more from you tonight. Our first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. The agenda is published the Wednesday prior to each meeting, and everyone's had a chance to review or should have. Are there any comments on the agenda? And if there are none, could I please get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Doyle, second by Simmons. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We have an agenda. First item on that agenda is good news and superintendent update. Superintendent Berg.
Thank you, Chair Christensen, members of the board, members of the community. We'll try to keep this somewhat short because we have our buildings here tonight. That's way more fun than listening to me talk. But some exciting news to start out with. We have state champions as part of our district again. The Farmington, Lakeville, Burnsville Blazing Cats won the Adaptive Floor Hockey Championship over the weekend. And we shared in the fall that they've won multiple soccer championships. This was actually their first adaptive floor hockey championship. They beat a team with a really long name. The first one was New Prague, so it was kind of from that area, 16 to 5 in the championship. So congratulations to that group of learners. Just a quick legislative update. There's been a lot of action going on. There's been over 3,000 bills introduced in this session alone. And now is kind of the time when hopefully the rubber will hit the road. The leaders of the governor and the leaders of the House and the Senate identified their budget targets last Tuesday night, and they set aside $2.2 billion in additional spending for K-12 education. We were hoping that the House and Senate would have released their spending bills today, so we at least get an idea where they're going to allocate those things, which would give us a better idea. They have not done that at this point in time. So the good news about the spending target is it will start to push off a lot of the bills that were brought forward, because now they know exactly how much money they have to divvy up, and they'll have to get down to their priorities in order to do that. So hopefully, over the next couple of days, we'll see what those priorities are for spending. We know what the governor's priority is. We'll see how closely those things align with the House and the Senate, and then the chances of them all being aligned right away are pretty slim, so they'll kind of hammer it over the next few weeks. You know, we had some learner showcases last week, or last time before the work session tonight. But I just wanted to give a shout out to the Dodge and Bachman staffs. They did a, they had their, they had their conferences a couple of weeks ago, and they changed up the way that they did their conferences, and turned a portion of those into a giant showcase, where kids had the opportunity to share their learning and bring their parents into that. And had an opportunity to peek in, and it was, it was pretty cool to listen to kids and families not just talk about what the learning looked like, but actually see it and see what those artifacts are around it. There was a certain energy in the buildings, and I know they were very proud of how it turned out. They were nervous when they designed it, because you never know when you want to bring people in and share those types of things, how it's going to go, especially when kids haven't had that opportunity to share in front of authentic audiences before. But I know it's something that they're going to look forward to continuing and to build off of that. Dodge and Bachman are also kind of getting geared up for spring break. Bachman had their spirit week last week. Dodge is having their spirit week this week, and it's highlighted by a recognition rally on Wednesday, which is going to be another celebration for their kids before they head off to spring break. Some of you may or may not know this, but March 21st is kind of National Down Syndrome Day, and both North Trail and Meadowview celebrated that day and brought awareness to Down Syndrome by Rock Your Socks Day. And that is honored by wearing brightly colored mismatched socks, and the 21st is symbolic, because people with Down Syndrome have three copies of their 21st chromosome. So an opportunity to celebrate the differences that those people have and the similarities that we have with everybody, and then also learn more about Down Syndrome. So both buildings had a great experience with that. Fourth grade at North Trail had their wax museum on Friday. We were doing some stuff at the high school with their staff. I didn't have an opportunity to get over to that. Saw some pictures, and it looked absolutely outstanding. And then finally, Aiken Road had their science fair March 8. They had 35 participants in that, K through 5, and I did have a chance to see some of their projects. And those things always blow me away in terms of how in-depth kids will go to prove or disprove some things. Sometimes you think about that just happening in normal daily life, and they really dig into it. So it was, it was a fun day for them. And like I said, they were excited about the number of kids that participated in that. So with that, Chair Christensen, that will end kind of the good news and the update.
Awesome. Thank you, Superintendent Berg. Our next item is the student. Board representative updates. We'll start with you, Emma.
Yeah, good evening, everybody. I'll just start off with some things that are going on at our high school. So currently, we have an FHS book tournament as a part of March Madness. Right now, we're down to four matches, so eight books, and there's some popular books like Twilight, Maze Runner, The Giver, The Outsiders, some classics. And so cast your votes, as the winner will be decided at the end of this week. As for NHS, we are currently having applications start. So if you are interested in joining NHS, and you are a current 10th or 11th grader, you have a GPA of 3.5 or above, and you uphold the society's four pillars of service, character, scholarship, and citizenship, that's a really good opportunity for you. And current members do not need to reply for the next school year. And so if you're interested, reach out to Mrs. Johnson or the other exec board members and teachers in it. And the request to join the Schoology course code has a course code of 9NDD-VZNR-57KTZ. Again, this is a really great opportunity. You gain invaluable experiences from volunteering, and it's just a good opportunity to find other opportunities. As for our seniors, as we near graduation, I'd like to just highlight some of the hard work and dedication from our seniors at FHS. So when reaching the end of Farmington's education system, many take the next step into their post-secondary education by enrolling in those options. So from college to university to technical colleges, trades, et cetera, there are many great pathways for everybody. So at an Instagram account that is not officially associated with FHS, at FHS Seniors 2023, some classmates have made a community page for our seniors, so seniors can DM them with their information, and they'll share it out. It's a great way to share what you're doing. So it usually has a picture of them, their senior pictures, the college they're going to, or whatever institution, and includes their minors, their majors, and if they're involved in any sports at their next option. And it's just a great way to share what's going on in our lives as graduation years is. Also, for next year, FHS has a spring break opportunity for students to enroll in. Today is actually the last day to get $100 off, but signups are still available following this day. It'll just be at full price, and that will be open until October, or as long as spots are available. The current trips are for Italy, Greece, and the Greek Islands, or London, Paris, and the Alps. So some really great places in Europe. Links are available on Schoology, so check that out if you're a high school student. And then lastly, I was able to attend River View's Book Fair at Tiger Spiritware for conferences, and it went super well. And I just loved being able to talk to old teachers and being able to see our learner showcase. It was just a really good time for me to reconnect with elementary school. So I just want to give a big thank you to all teachers, but especially elementary school teachers, because they just are a big impact at that time in your life. So thank you, and I'll move it over to Kennedy.
Hi. So I would like to kind of highlight some of the middle school celebrations of learning that went on. So I was able to speak with some of the staff and Mr. Nelson. And Mr. Nelson, the principal at Dodge, shared a story of how he just saw kids grabbing their parents by the wrists and kind of dragging them in to go show them all the different cool things. And so I was able to stop by Dodge, and I saw all the projects out by the hallways. And it was just so cool how they're able to integrate some of their art skills with their history class and all those different things. And even the teachers were super excited to try something different, rather than the traditional style of self-reflection that is typically seen. Great work to everyone who brought that on. And then speaking of conferences, I'd also like to thank all PTPs and everything that they do, but especially the River View PTP. The PTP of River View is in charge of their Scholastic Book Fair and their Spiritware store. They have every single detail down and under control to an honestly amazing point. They allow things like their book fair sales and Tiger Pride merch to be easily accessible for all families and staff through nothing but their hard volunteer work and dedication. As someone who went there to help out just for the night and kind of shadow all the things at these conferences, it was super easy for me to get right into the swing of getting behind the Spiritware store and the book fair. And so PTPs of Farmington, you're all very much appreciated, and thank you for all the work you do in those schools. At the high school, it was the start of trimester three at the beginning of this month. Our first three weeks of the trimester are dedicated to staying within our classes and kind of hunkering down on our work to make sure that we are set to have a nice relaxing spring break and ready to finish the school year strong. We also have additional Tiger Connection time that has been gifted to us, so we're able to make lasting connections with our students and our Tiger Connections for all those four years, as well as some extra homework time for anything that we might need to get done. There's also great flexibility for any students who might need to finish any work from past trimesters to make sure that they are on course to finish the year strong. This year, prom will be hosted at US Bank Stadium on May 20. All juniors and seniors are invited. I wanted to announce that registration will be available starting April 10, and then from April 10 through April 23, tickets will be $55 per person. Any tickets sold after that and before May 7, there's a cutoff of May 7, and that'll be $60 per person. So if any students watching or any parents of a junior or senior who's looking forward to prom, make sure to register before April 24, which is actually another school board meeting that day. So I'll set up one more reminder. And then lastly, we have some really amazing groups at Farmington that have been doing some community service work. So FHS Tiger Surf participated in a used t-shirt drive from March 14 through March 24. They collected used and unwanted t-shirts from the community to make reusable no-sew bags. The bags were given to 360 community food shelves in our area, which are experiencing a current shortage of those bags used by clients to take home with them once they receive some goods. The Women's History Month Committee at our high school is currently hosting a shelter drive. They're collecting items to be delivered to Lewis House Shelters, which is a domestic violence support center that provides emergency housing. The drive started last Monday and goes up until this Friday, so there is still time to donate. They've also made it a friendly competition between grade levels to see which can collect the most items, with the winner being announced after spring break. If you'd like to participate or help out your grade, more information can be found on one of our old Instagrams called FHS Tiger Gram. Thank you.
Thanks so much for the updates. It's good to hear all that stuff that's going on at the, at the high school and actually across the district and through your perspectives. Our next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The consent agenda is made up of routine business items that can be acted upon with one motion. If any board member wishes to discuss an item, they may request it be pulled from the consent agenda, and it will be acted upon separately. Does anybody have an item they wish to discuss? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Doyle, second by Simmons. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Consent agenda has passed. Our next item is reports and communications. Our first item is from the learner showcases. Farmington Elementary, Bachman Middle School, Farmington High School, with Principals Bowleson, Assistant Principal Thompson, and Interim Principal Lund. Take it away.
All right. Good evening, Chair Christensen, board members, Superintendent Berg, administration, and community members. We're excited to be here tonight, and thank you for letting us come. It's a little piece of FES that we can bring you and show you what's happening. We had a great opportunity with our fifth graders to help out our PTP. We have an upcoming Family Fun Night on June 2. If you're not busy, we'll send you an invite. But we had an opportunity for them to help out PTP. So I have with me Megan Suie, our school counselor, and Gavin, who had a great, great experience with his, to explain a little bit more about what happened.
Hi. About a month or so ago, I went into all the fifth grade classrooms, and I went back to some of our old traditional stuff that we used to do when collecting donations for our Free Family Fun Night. That's coming up in June. I had the students handwrite a letter, so I had about a little over 100 letters that went out to all the Farmington businesses here, who would then receive information from a student regarding a donation, possibly for our Family Fun Night. Now let Gavin tell you the rest.
Well, I got a letter. Well, I wrote a letter to this stealing cabinet co-company, and they wrote a letter back saying I can go tour their company with a friend. And this guy named Matt toured us around, and I got to see all the machinery. And it was pretty awesome.
Yeah. What was really neat was seeing the connection between the students and the companies that we sent the letters out to, because lo and behold, Gavin sent a letter to a former FES student. So he thought it was just really awesome that he got a handwritten letter from a student from FES where he had gone, and it turned out that he actually had the same teacher that Gavin has today. So while we were there, we got to sit in his office and chit chat, and they talked about how they have the same teacher and their experiences at FES. And so that was kind of a surprising, I would say, connection that we made. But again, just instilling our community values and talking about how needed it is that somebody like Chad stayed within Farmington, just because he really liked the experience. And so, yeah, he, not only did he donate some beautiful handcrafted stuff that he made for our Family Fun Night, but then he also invited Gavin and a friend to come and tour his wood shop, which was above and beyond what I ever expected to get back. So that was very cool. Yeah.
Very exciting.
Do you guys have any questions for Gavin or anything?
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks for sharing your experience tonight.
Good evening. My name is Dan Thompson, and I'm filling in for Principal Sage. He's filling in under the weather tonight, so I got the signal to come up here and share, and was able to be outside and meet some of you and talk to some of you as our, as our learners presented. We had Ms. Matei, one of our sixth grade teachers, come, and she brought Emma and Lucas here, and they shared about an interdisciplinary project in which they did in language arts class and science class around the Thai soccer team that was trapped in the cave for 18 days. And they read that book. And one, one neat thing about this year is in sixth grade, we now have earth science. And so it works with that, that topic, works both in reading the book in language arts, but then also in science, looking at rock formations and, and the different things there. And so Lucas was really looking into the science, and what was the science behind the flood, and how they got the, the boys out, while Emma acted like a journalist and wrote a news article, like she was there. Again, a lot of fun to share with all of you, and I know they enjoyed talking to each one of you. Our seventh grade was represented by Ms. Ginnerman, and she had Olivia come. And they shared about a project that they did in history and in language arts as well, around mile in our shoes, where they had to pick a topic that they wanted to learn more about and the impacts of that. And so Olivia shared about the impacts of being deaf. And this, this project had a lot of different research components in it, but I thought one thing that was really exciting was at the end, how they just paused and reflect about, either confirmed what they had thought about, or what they had learned through that process of doing that research. So in a middle school model, anytime that we can have interdisciplinary projects happening, it's super exciting. And just, again, a quick snapshot into some of the great things that we have going on at Bachman this year. Any questions?
Just a quick comment. It was pretty cool to see how excited they were. I know, I'm sorry, the students' names were?
Olivia, and Emma, and Lucas.
Okay, so they, they had written the article about the, the rescue of those kids, and then Lucas was talking about the, the reasons why the sedimentary rock had kind of peeled away and caused a lot of turbidity in the water, and why it became such a challenge. But they were very excited about it. And same with Gavin here, too. I know he was excited to see Chad Dillon and visit that. So what a great way to not just learn, but also bring that learning to life and hear those connections. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is John Lund. I'm an interim principal at the, at the high school here in Farmington, and I have the opportunity to talk about a new mentorship, or introduce a new mentorship program that, that actually our AD, Mr. Badger, started this year. And really, what it had to do is matching student leaders, student athletes with, with off-season coaches. And just, I mean, the brilliance of that is that they, that kids get to have an opportunity they wouldn't otherwise have, because they're, they're not just with their own in-season coaches and program. And so, so head coaches, and not just head coaches, because I got a little coaching fix myself, because I haven't had one for a while, so I got to be a part of this. But we're matched with, with, again, student, student leaders, a lot of captains, and we're just able to, to get different perspectives of leadership and what it's like to be captains, and then the important role that they play. I brought with, came with tonight, is a head coach of our, our head wrestling coach, Chad Olson, to speak a little bit more about the details of the program this year.
So I had the opportunity in the fall to mentor two of the girls' soccer captains. It got started a little bit late, because it was his idea about late August, that maybe we should try this, and soccer season is done in mid-October. So I think I had about three to four weeks, where we met once a week with the captains. I found an inventory online, like a leadership-style inventory, that took them about a minute to take. And it sort of said, here's your leadership style. Both of them looked at it. We reflected on it. They're like, that is absolutely me. So the discussion became, well, then here's what you need to know. Here are your strengths, but then here are some things you really need to think about, drawbacks. And as we've talked about them, they're both like, oh, yeah, that's for sure my... So then we spent the next four weeks saying, all right, pick one thing. What are you going to try to improve on, on those weaknesses moving forward? And as you work with your teammates, it was awesome to reflect back with them. Sometimes it went really well, and other times it was like, yeah, I tried, and I failed miserably. And then it was, which is, you know, part of the whole learning process, right? So it was being able to step back and say, why did that happen? Or, I mean, what was going on? And to have those reflective conversations, just give them more opportunities to sort of grow as leaders. I know I had a, one of our assistant football coaches worked with my three wrestling captains, or leaders, throughout the season. And I don't know exactly what they talked about, because that wasn't, that's sort of their thing. And, but they loved their visits with them every week. And I know he ended up, part of it was that I went to soccer games, and I don't hardly ever go to girls' soccer games. And I know Mr. Bowles came to all of our wrestling stuff towards the end, so it's fun to see those coaches go to those other events and support those kids. And then they can sort of have those conversations also. Hey, I watched you do this, and good work, or see him in the hallway and give him the fist bump, and have those conversations. It's been pretty good. Like I said, it's the first year, so we're all learning as we go. And I know this spring, we're all going to sort of get together and have a big sort of brainstorming of what worked, what didn't work, how can we grow this moving forward, with the idea of even branching out, including more of the activities around the building. So questions?
Well, as, as somebody in girls' soccer, I'm excited to see where the program goes. So, thank you.
Welcome. Outstanding. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is an ISD 917 update with Dr. Michael Favor, the superintendent for 917. Welcome, welcome to the Farmington School Board, Dr. Favor.
Thank you. Board Chair, board members, Hannah Simmons, and guests, administration. Thank you for having me here tonight. My name is Mike Favor, proud superintendent of ISD 917. Well, in the process, one of the things we say at ISD 917 is we belong to each other. We belong to each other. So what does that look like in action? How does that play forward? How does that move forward? Tell you a quick story before I jump into this. We were sitting in circle with a number of our staff. We have these circle meetings. And one of our staff, who was deaf, she talked about, the topic was people or something that influences you, that makes you happy. And she talked about her daughter, and the power of connection with her daughter. But she said, if my battery dies, I lose that connection. And I thought, wow. Something as simple as a battery, that we take for granted, that I take for granted, has an impact on how she connects with her daughter. And again, those type of conversations really helped me be very intentional about we belong to each other, because you just never know. Never know what people are going through, never know the power of a battery, and the impact it could have on someone's life. That being said, try to move this along, Jason.
I'm gonna get you guys hooked up with Max.
I know, man. I got you.
Right there. Get it right there.
Let's go to the lighthouse. You wouldn't believe this, Jason, but I have a mic.
That's right. I get lost with the format change, too.
I got it. Here we go. All right. During the pandemic, I took a break up to the North Shore. I was walking around on the North Shore, and it hit me like a ton of bricks. Came across the lighthouse. And schools, in particular ours, we were in the middle of a storm. And it just reminded me the elegance and the purpose of a lighthouse. That in a storm, we're going to be there, much like your staff were there for our children, because they're all our children. Like your staff was there for our children in the time of a storm, everything from education to feeding people to doing a number of different things. Everyone from bus drivers to cooks, to peer professionals, to teachers, working together on behalf of children. So when it's not a storm, it reflects, lighthouses reflect this, just this thing of beauty, confidence, and hope, much like education. So again, in 917, periodically, I know when I'm on Zooms, you'll see them, the lighthouse behind me, just reminds me that education, schools, it's important that leaders, it's important that we reflect hope by telling the truth, but also reflecting that hope. Here's our mission and vision. We put together, I walked into a strategic plan, in the middle of a strategic plan, and we put together our mission and vision, along with students, staff, and families. What came out of this is core values, as long as some of our strategic directions, our mission, and our vision, our core values. The reason I say the core values is living into that every day is important for us, and the work that we do that reflects the children, their voice, that we work with. Not going to go through the core values, but there they go. One of my proudest pictures, look at our kids. Look at our staff. Makes everybody smile. Legislation was put in place for intermediates, I can't see from there, so sorry, I got old eyes. In 1969, that we serve birth through 21. That's a role of intermediate school districts in partnership with nine different districts. We go from Bloomington to Randolph, to Farmington, Lakeville, West St. Paul, South St. Paul, and many others, Hastings. So we work together in collaboration with each other, nine-member districts. Our board reflects that. Our superintendent meetings reflect that. And again, when I say we belong to each other, we belong to that even more so as a board. And the goal is to grow it even better with our superintendents. I'm going to be honest. Even better with our superintendents, because fiscally, I think we can support some programming that, and make sure we're not duplicating and replicating programming. And you have a great superintendent here, by the way, who's always challenging and asking those probing questions of us. Here's our board. Look at that group. Fun group.
Who did our meetings?
We, we have two primary programs. One is our special education programs that also serve itinerant needs. Itinerant is special, is deaf and hard-of-hearing, speech, visually impaired, some of those kind of programs that are housed in different buildings. those kind of programs that are housed in different buildings throughout our, uh, throughout our nine member districts. Uh, we also have DCAWS programming, which is our, uh, ALC and also our CTE, our Career and Technical Education programming housed at Dakota Technical College. You're one of the, the biggest member districts, we're participating in those programs as a pathway to whether it be students earning a certificate and going into the workforce, to students underway to college, Dakota County Technical College. And we partner with Inver Hills as well. This is some of the areas that we serve, as you can see by the dots, all over the district. I've made it to a majority of these, uh, these schools, but I have a few more to go, but just kind of all over the member districts. We have a unique partnership where our offices are housed at Dakota Technical College. We just finished up our joint powers agreement, Hannah, I'll be bringing you that, um, so you can see it. And again, in partnership with Dakota County. The goal is more students having access to early college. We're working on that now, middle college, post-secondary programming, while coming to, um, Dakota Technical College as part of 917, just more access. Here are some of our business partners. We partner with Minnesota Humanity Center, Rev Academy, which I'm going to at some point in time share with the superintendents. They do kind of programming that's pretty cool. They do these kind of like robotics, but they do it for students who want to start their own business. When I was a principal at North High School, they took a group of young people, worked with them on website design, had the young people walk down the streets of, uh, kind of the North Side on, on Broadway, the businesses, and build websites for businesses. They also did it for different communities within, on the North Side, like the Homewood Community, so that people could really connect and they build websites. And it's great, it's a great partnership, but Rev Academy, I'm going to bring to our superintendents, it's pretty, it's really impressive. Okay, here's a number of the past. In the past, we served many more students at Farmington, as well as other districts. Reason being, now, we're serving less. It's partly due to peer professionals, we need more peer professionals. And what we didn't want to do was outprice our member districts by paying our peer professionals for more. We want to make sure we stay in line because we didn't want to take from you, we want to work in partnership with you. But the more peer professionals are good, the more that we will be able to, uh, grow our programming. When I walked in, on the first day of the job, no one kind of told me this, by the way, we needed 129 peer professionals, 129. We're down to just above 100. And I will say this and be somewhat apologetic about it, not everyone can work at 917. We have some students who are medically fragile, we have some students who have been, or an eye dysregulated, mental health issues. So it takes a special person to come work at 917. But once you get there, our contract is strong and a lot of people stay. We just got to get more people in the door. Because some of our sites don't have busing or transportation, it's hard to get to some of our sites. But we're growing, we're growing in that area and we're getting better. Currently, you have 61 students in our programming. The definitions, if I missed that, there's a definitions iron here around what is a SUN program? There's a lot of acronyms, K's, dash, but you have 20 students in SUN and we're starting to move the waitlist, which is everyone's concern. And as we get more staff, we recently hired 12 staff as we get, uh, more staff coming in. Uh, DCAWS is our alternative school, and you will see trend over time have, have been similar. We have roughly, uh, 75 students in DCAWS right now. That's our, just our alternative school housed at Dakota County. We also have a, our alternative school that's housed a little further north in, um, West St. Paul. But on the main campus, you have roughly 75 students there that go to our alternative school. And this is something that's kind of interesting that I really like is our CTE programming, where we talk about not duplicating programming. We have some really strong CTE programs. We're about to continue to grow our CTE programs and articulate them soon with Dakota County so students can earn college credit while in high school, some of our, in our programming. We have 107. And we had to close down constructions just for a little while because it's hard to find a teacher in constructions, but we have two really good candidates. We hope to have that, or we will have that up and running again. One of the things that we're doing, this next slide, is we're sharing data with, um, our special ed directors and our superintendents. That data is showing where students are being referred from. Our goal is to keep students in this district versus referring them out. And how can we support that thinking with that? What are some of the professional developments we can provide to keep students in? And then also transitioning back, we don't talk enough about that. As students begin to transition back, what specifically can we do to help students transition back? And, um, we're sharing the data as to what sites are referring. And one of the districts, not this one, every special ed referral for some of the high-risk programs came from one school. So that's where we can, we can begin to go in and intervene and work with the staff to prevent students being referred and keep them in districts. We are purposeful, personalized partners. That's hard to say quick, purposeful, personalized partners. And thank you for your time. I'll open it up for questions.
So no questions, but I just will add that during the time that I've been able to participate and represent our district on the 917 board, Dr. Favor and his staff really live and model the values that, um, are included in the document that he shared through everything, through our meetings. Our meetings are structured around the values, the strategic directions, um, communication, his weekly updates are structured around that. The staff just can talk about the things that they're doing off the cuff in a way that is not only technical or practical, but also connects to meaning and purpose. And so, um, I think there's just been a lot of really positive staff feedback around things like Story Circles, which is a tool that, um, Dr. Favor and team introduced to staff, um, to help build more relationships and connections, um, among staff and with students. And, um, we've also heard from students, um, who are, who are attending different 917 and participating in different services. And the way that they talk about the support from staff and how they feel like they have people who understand them, who don't make assumptions about them, who don't judge them, who really see them for the whole person that they are and not just how they present themselves each day, but recognizing that every day there's, could be different based on what your circumstances are or what you're going through. It just, you really feel it. And so just want to commend Dr. Favor and his team for their commitment. There is a relentless passion for, um, supporting member districts, for continuing to find ways to improve for, um, member districts internally for their staff and always centered around students, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I know I didn't have questions, but Dr. Favor, it is, um, you know, this is our third year on the board and, and we've, we've heard about 917, but it's been sort of an abstract concept. So it's really great to hear, see you here tonight and, and hear from you directly and kind of walk through both the challenges that you're facing, because I know that we're facing many of the same with terms of pairs and staff, and also that being a key to continue to expand your programs. Um, I hope that, you know, all of our school districts are a way to, have, find a way to, through some of those challenges and bring more people into the field. I can, can imagine the, the, as you said, the, the special person it takes to work. Um, I, I had an exchange with a friend of ours who's a special education teacher too, and I, I just think that's, you know, one of the, that's, that's, that's God's work right there. And, uh, you know, God bless those, those individuals and, and, and hopefully can bring more of them into the space.
Thank you.
So thank you.
And thank you for having young people, students, that's a part of this board. I think that's exciting. Congratulations, you two.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That is the end of our reports and communications. Can I get a motion to acknowledge receipt of reports and communications?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Simmons, second by Doyle, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. We'll move on to our administrative actions. Our first is approval of health insurance premiums for 2023 and 2024. It's the first of a couple of insurance-related, um, administrative actions. So Mary Ann, would you please?
I will, thank you. Chair Christensen, members of the board, administration and members of the community. Tonight, I bring before you, um, a, um, resolution to approve our self-funded health insurance, uh, program for the 23, 24 school year. Um, we do have a, just as a little background, we do have a committee representing all of our employee groups at all of the different buildings that get together on a, oh, like every other month basis to review our claims for our self-insured plan, plan, to see how we're doing. They help us educate other employees about our plan. And then every other year by legislation, we are required to go out for health insurance bids, and this is one year that we did have to do that. So we put together a proposal, went out for bids, and, uh, we had two companies bid for our insurance. And with some back and forth negotiations with our, by our, um, broker, One Digital, we do recommend that we can, um, uh, sign up for 23, 24 with United Healthcare. We've been with Preferred One for many, many years and United Healthcare did buy Preferred One last year. So there will be very, very little disruption for our employees. Maybe a few providers would change, but even that is not very, um, not, not very likely for most of our employees. So United Healthcare is our recommendation for our third-party administration. In order to maintain a healthy reserve or to build a healthier reserve, pay the claims, we are recommending that the health insurance premiums increase for Plans A and B, which are traditional copay plans, by 8%. And our health savings account compatible, that's the high deductible Plan C, increase by 6%. And those are differentiated based on where the claims are coming in. This would be effective July 1st, we'd have an open enrollment period in late April, early May. And there is a resolution before you, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Mary Ann, just to, um, clarify for the, um, premiums that we're seeing, these are annual totals for single, two-party and family?
No, these are the monthly premiums.
For the total district, not felt by the employee, right?
Oh, this is the total for, yes, the employee and employer portion, total premium that we pay.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's divvied up differently by each employee group, how much the district pays.
Thank you.
I'm trying to remember last year, I'm, this time, the, the percentage increases were much higher.
They were, yes.
So it's good to see that some of this is leveling off, I imagine, the cost of COVID-19 and some of the other things that were going on at the time were driving that. Is the, you mentioned the balance for, uh, paying claims, is, that was one of the issues last year? Is that continuing in a sustainable and, and stable path right now?
It's on a stable path. We aren't where we want to be, but we are, um, on the right path. We were 8 to 10% last year of, um, our, our reserve was 8 to 10%, we're a little higher than that, but we continue to want to improve that a little bit year after year.
Okay, thank you. All right, I need to abstain from this vote because my employer, uh, has a relationship with, uh, Preferred One, so, um, that being said, is there a motion to?
I'll make a motion to approve the self-funded health and hospitalization program with United Healthcare as the third-party administrator effective July 1, 2023, with a premium increase effective July 1, 2023 of 8% for Plan A and Plan B and 6% for Plan C.
Second.
Motion by Doyle, second by DeWilde, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Our next item is approval of the dental insurance renewal. Mary Ann?
Thank you. Similar to the health insurance, we are self-funded for our dental insurance and have been for ever and a day. We have not had a premium increase in, in the entire time I've been here over a dozen years, but our claims are going up a little bit over the last couple of years. So the committee does recommend that we increase the premiums on our dental insurance by just 5%. And 5% of pretty small numbers is just a couple dollars a month. So, um, we do think this is prudent to do this, are, we have a very healthy reserve, um, in our dental insurance, but do feel like we need to have a small increase so we don't get some big increase down the road. And so I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about dental.
All right. Seeing none, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the adjustment of dental premiums effective July 1, 2023 as presented.
Second.
Motion by Simmons, second by DeWilde, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Our final item under administrative actions is approval of the 2023, 2024 budget alignment recommendations. Superintendent Berg?
Uh, thank you Chair Christensen. Um, I, I'm not, I, I linked the presentation from the work session, um, and we've spent a significant time over really last eight months talking about our budget forecast, our projections, our modeling, um, and where we think that is potentially going to leave us. Just a quick review, um, we did with goal of a little bit more of a conservative model that the board, um, agreed upon in, uh, early February. And you can see to hold the enrollment steady, three and two on the general ed formula, special ed cross subsidy 50%, multilingual cross subsidy 25%, using our internal inflationary factor of 4.62%. And then we did, we know this for certain, we did see, uh, they did direct certification for, um, uh, Free and Reduced, which actually increased all of, um, the, uh, all of the Free and Reduced population crisis, across the state of Minnesota, um, which does bring in with it additional, uh, compensatory ed revenue. So we did add that in from, from the fall. And so with all that, we were projecting about a $3 million deficit. If you remember, part of that conversation was to use a million dollars from the 2015 assigned fund balance, which there's about $2 million after this year remaining in it, to really buy down, um, uh, staffing ratio increase of plus one. Uh, just as a quick reminder that we did, um, move it back to what was in board policy last year as part of our budget realignment. Um, after the 2015 levy, we were fortunate enough to be able to have that staffing ratio actually be one below. Last year, we did increase it by one, but it bought it back up to what it had been in, in, in the parameters in the policy. And, and I'll be honest with you, there's still a lot of unknowns with the legislative, you know, what's going on in the legislature. I mean, there's some good news around potential funding, but there's also some scary things that, um, we are hoping that will fall to the wayside now that the target's out there. But there is a potential that, you know, there could be some unfan, unfunded mandates or, I mean, I shouldn't say even worse, or ones that give you a two, one or two-year kicker to get things going and then the funding goes away. All good things, but there's still some unknowns. So this, you know, is this conservative? You know, it was conservative when we knew, it might not be as conservative now based on what we're seeing, but, um, you know, we, we, their timeline doesn't match our timeline and we had to get the ball rolling and we did it with the best, um, information we have. As part of the parameters, um, that were approved by the board, we did reinstate the building and program capital budgets back to the 2000, 2021 levels. If you remember, there was a 50% reduction in those capital, um, budgets as part of a realignment, um, two years ago. realignment, um, two years ago. Um, we are budgeting to add two multilingual teachers. Um, the reality is that probably won't be enough based on our multilingual population, but it gives us a starting point. And then, uh, baseline of learner-supported at, at our elementary buildings, about, um, five, or I'm sorry, about, um, $100,000 to get everybody to a principal, counselor, and then a student support specialist. And that, uh, that added an additional, uh, $319. And so to get to the $2 million reduction, we actually had to come up with a realignment of $2.4 million. I know that, um, this was discussed and shared at, um, at the last meeting. Um, we've talked about it in some different individual board meetings, but I also want to, 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 um, reiterate the fact that this was, um, it wasn't a one-month kind of put-together sort of thing. Our, um, the board began this work based in September of last year, prior to the board change. Um, at that point in time, we were actually projecting a $7 million deficit. Um, and then our admin team, um, went to work to identify about $5 million in reduction. Uh, that was about a two-and-a-half-month process. Um, that was not easy to do. Um, and then the, um, the former, um, finance committee also worked on that prior to our last meeting in December, where we kind of identified buckets of where we would be at, waiting to see what would happen with the legislature, which drew back some stuff, um, into that. So, um, what I'm here to ask is the board approve, um, these realignment measures so that we'll have a balanced budget based on what we know right now. Um, we could come back in a couple of months and talk about some other decisions, maybe one way or another, uh, based on when, um, things go. But we do have some statutory, um, and contractual timelines that, that we have to meet. And there isn't anything on this, um, list that isn't going to create a gap somewhere in our system or, um, potentially create, um, additional work for other people, um, around this or leave things undone. That just, when there's a reduction, that happens. What is the full extent of that? That will be to be determined. Um, it's still things that we are working through. Um, you know, we, we, we do have time to plan around these things because unlike other things, when we make a reduction, it doesn't just end in two weeks. We have, we get through the rest of the school year, we have the summer. So, um, our admin team, now that this has become, um, public and we've begun to spoken to employees that are in these positions and begin to plan around what those things are looking like, but we still need additional time to engage with, um, staff and teachers to figure out, you know, what is the best way to do that. And that'll involve how they build schedules and stuff they'll take on during the summer. So that's a, it was supposed to be a brief background. It wasn't so brief, but I think it builds some context and things like that. But I would ask that the board, um, approve in, uh, these, uh, realignments, um, to get us to at least pointing towards a balanced budget based on the information that we have at this time.
Can I just make comment and ask for, like, um, public, uh, explanation, just one thing? So, um, I'm really thankful for, like, recognizing that a reduction or a realignment needs to be made, because I think, like, you know, we have to make sure that we're, um, responsible financially and accountable to, um, our community to make sure we keep our district, um, healthy. So, um, it doesn't affect our longevity. Um, and in working through these, uh, realignment, um, items, um, I was like, just reminded, and I don't know if this is just because I'm, I'm new to this whole process or whatever, but all of a sudden I'm like reminded of, um, during my campaign, some of my, the pillars and the things that I talked about were, um, I said, and the quote, um, that I would prioritize foundational educational skills and direct instructional time, and that I would direct dollars and decisions towards primary education and curriculum. And so, um, when I look at this, listeners, there's one item in particular that I feel like, um, I've been just hesitant and, um, especially the past week, thinking about, if we take away the middle school math, um, interventionist, like, does that make me, like, I don't know, not a person of integrity, because I wouldn't be doing what I'd say I would do? But, um, I was hoping, because of the explanation that I just got, like, um, through email of how you explained how that would rework. So I would hope, was hoping for the public, you could do that.
Like I said, like, we have, we have plans, right?
Yeah, yeah. Could you share that? Because to me, it puts me at ease.
Yep.
Like, okay, there's a plan. We're not going to leave these kids, like.
Nope. And I know this came up, and I know this came up in the work session, and one of the, we weren't quite ready to finalize that because our middle schools were still working through some things. And so, um, our, our, the middle school interventionist is a push-in model, which means that they go into classrooms and they work with kids in the classroom. It's not a pull-out model where they're assigned a, a specific group of kids. So they're going in and working with another teacher. And so what the middle schools plan to do, and they had to check on their staffing, is that, um, we, we identify students that need additional literacy support, math support. We will continue to do that. We will be able to cluster those kids into a math, um, classroom, um, at sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And then we also have transition classes that are required as well. And those transition classes have lots of different things that they, they work on and study, but the plan is to then also, um, have those students be in the same transition class with the math teacher. And so they'll be connected with the like math teacher on both of those. And Mr. Busman might correct me if I'm wrong, but, and even, uh, Mr. Thompson, those run on alternate days, because math doesn't meet every day in the high school. So it's a block, it meets every other day. So they may or may not get math instruction every day, but they're going to have access to a math teacher every day and the same math teacher.
Yeah. That really puts me at ease. Like, when I, like, was, like, piecing that together, I was like, okay, that doesn't compromise in making academics the priority. So thanks for taking time.
It's not.
I just wanted, like, the public to, like, also hear.
I mean, you take a body out of the classroom, that's not perfect. We all, we're going to acknowledge that and recognize that, but I think through some unique scheduling, they can still provide access to learners that most need that math support. And I think, to me, when I look at building a schedule around that, the consistency of having the same math teacher is the key to that, because they build the relationship, they know, um, you know, maybe what strengths the kids have in math, what gaps that they have in math, and then they can target, you know, some of that, that additional time, um, because they have that relationship. I don't know if it'd be quite as strong if it wasn't the same math teacher, but the plan is to make sure that it's the same math teacher.
All right. Thank you again.
Becky, thank you for bringing that up, because I know that, um, a lot of people that watch this in the community don't understand that there are things that happen in the background. Um, I know, Jason, thank you for responding to my emails, however late they may be sometimes. Um, I had similar questions as Becky did, and so I appreciate you asking during the meeting, and, and Jason, you giving the responses too, because I, again, I had the same concerns with academics.
The, the hard part, right, is with schools, the, the whole, the calendar's weird, because, like, we're in, like, we're, we're in the beginning of the third trimester, but like, our principals are starting, like, next year planning. And so they're kind of doing this dual thing. And so I know at times it sounds like, well, you don't have a concrete plan, and that, there's some truth to that, because at this point in time, because we're still finishing up this year and we haven't begun scheduling, I mean, the, the high school and the middle school are still sectioning out, you know, exactly what classes they're going to have and how they're going to organize those things. Elementarys just did their sectioning, they haven't been able to share that with teachers. And so, you know, I know we've had some conversations about, like, the media center paraprofessionals, and there's gonna, there will be some loss there. The loss won't be to access for our kids. They'll still have a specialist schedule that they'll be able to get into the media center, but, you know, who supports, um, some of the shelving, the re-shelving? Um, we know that the youngest, um, learners need more support when they come in for specialist. And so I know that when they start to build their schedules and use that, that, that paraprofessional time, trying to prioritize so that they're in there with the K1s and 2s. And then what are some other things that we can do? We have ideas about, you know, what that is and what that can look like, and things that we haven't accessed that before, but putting it into play right at this point in time, that happens as they finish up the planning for the rest of the school year and into the summer and things like that. So there is a gray area. There's no doubt about it with a lot of these things. Um, and it's no different than, you know, kind of the process that when we didn't fill the tech position, and we plan not to fill it, right? They, there was time that they had to do that, and I know Dan's worked with his custodial team to figure out, well, if we're down a custodian, what does that look like and stuff? And so that's the thing that stinks about reductions. It's going to impact all of our operations, and I've said this before, we are a lean-running district. We really don't have a lot of other stuff. And we have, we have had reductions, you know, back to 2007, I believe 2011, 2015, we've been reducing the last three years. The reality is, a lot of those things that weren't, um, staffing ratios and some other things have never come back. And so we're still kind of fighting uphill around some of those things that were reduced back before. Because again, to, to your point, the priority's been back to, all right, how do we support the classroom? And how do we do that? And prioritizing those lower class sizes. So, I mean, this isn't, this was not a fun exercise, and it wasn't a fun exercise for administrators, because better than me, better than my team over there, they know, you know, they can see what the potential impact of each of these things. So every time there's a discussion about, well, we could do this, we could do this, their administrative mind starts going down, well, yes, but that impacts this. And now you're, you know, you're fighting and saying, well, what's the, what's the lesser of all the evils? These are all evil. What's the lesser of them? And this is our best attempt at that. So, sorry, that got to be long, too.
My question, uh, for you, Jason, and I, this isn't, this isn't a, a shocker question or anything like that, it's just not something I've had a chance to ask you offline, but, um, I have made the assumption that our conservative estimate was realistic, and I think indications up until recently were that it was probably a basement, not a ceiling, for what we might see from the state, but the, um, the status of the legislature and some of the legislative affairs calls that I've been on with MSBA and others frankly have me rattled that, um, the state, maybe they'll come through with the money, but they're going to come through with another, with twice that in, in rev, in, in expenses or something like that. Um, I'm very concerned about our legislators' ability to prioritize what's best for, for our schools and our communities, and to honor the, the trust that school boards and school districts have in taking care of their, their, their kids. Um, so we've had to make this, we've aimed for this vote tonight because it achieves legislative, you know, there's a statute that says we need to notify, I think by April 1, and then there's other contractual language, too. What happens if we get to May and we find out that not only do we have, uh, this $5.7 million deficit, but we actually have another four to eight million dollars in additional expenses that are not funded based on, you know, kind of what's going on in St. Paul right now?
Yeah. I, I mean.
How do, how do we meet those legislative requirements? Because we'll have been past that deadline.
Yeah. I, I mean, you, you look and see what you can reduce, that's not contractual. Um, you know, I, my personal, I, I know what you, we've talked a little bit about this, right? Because you've been on some meetings.
Well, you know where I'm at on it, but.
And I've been on some meetings too, right? I, I think, um, I think it's been kids in a candy shop up in the legislature up until this point in time, because they look and say that we have this much money, and 3,000 bills is ridiculous. I mean, that is by far the most that have ever come through. And so I do think that the targets are a reality check of what that can be, and I think, you know, we continue to advocate, um, from that administrative level that, yep, these things are good. Now, you know, could you have the case where it flips and, you know, we projected, you know, a 3 million, and we have it aligned, and it ends up being 5 million? It, it could happen. You know, I think at that point in time, this is where the district being financially disciplined over all of those years and having an unassigned, having an assigned fund balance that still has some money in it, and having an unassigned fund balance that is very healthy, that, um, it bails you out of that. I think, to be honest with you, that would probably hasten the discussion around a levy at that point in time, too. So I, I mean.
Yeah, correct. No, I mean, yeah, that's, that's given, right? I mean, some of the, some of the capital expenditures that would be required to meet some of those compliance goals are, um, a capital levy like we haven't seen, right?
Yeah. I'm a little nervous about it, but I, I'll be honest with you, I'm not panicked about it. I think if we had a much different financial, clearly reducing's not a great financial situation, but if we had a much different bank account situation, I'd be much more concerned about it.
Okay.
But it's a real, I mean, it's a, I mean, it's a, it's a real possibility.
I appreciate the conversation. It doesn't, I think, change the decision before the table right now, but I do want, you know, I, it's important, I think, for people to.
Yeah.
Spend a little time and not just talk to our legislatures who are pretty opposed to all of this stuff, and because they understand the impact, but also start reaching out to other elected officials in our state to advocate for, you know, again, policies that actually center students and student needs and not some of the partisan things going on.
Yeah. They talk about they want to stabilize school funding. That means you, you do kind of what we did, and then you don't add more stuff to it, because anything that's added to it is just going to just destabilize it. Even if they're great things, and there's some things that you could say are, that it would be great, but.
Correct.
So.
Sure.
Yeah. So, I don't know. People have other questions?
All right. Well, um, no other, uh, questions or comments. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the 2023, 2024 budget alignment recommendations as presented.
Second.
Motion by Doyle, second by Simmons. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, approval.
Thank you.
Passes. That ends our administrative actions, uh, for this meeting. Our last formal item on the agenda is policy action. There were three policies reviewed at the work session, uh, policy 506 on student discipline, policy 514, bully prohibition policy, and policy 522 Title IX sex nondiscrimination policy. Um, there were, these are routine updates. There were some typographical and other minor, uh, edits to those at the time. I don't believe there were any other kind of questions or concerns, but Melissa, can you refresh my memory in case I'm missing something?
No, they were all typographical, just as you stated. We didn't have any other additions.
Okay.
Changes.
Sorry, are there any questions?
I, I do have a question.
All right.
So, um, they're really long policies. I was like.
You should read the other, you should read the other 150 of them.
I'm like, oh my goodness, my goodness, we don't have to read through three, but, um, and I'm sure I probably missed some parts, but, um, I noticed, like, there's reference to Saturday School.
Where?
Do Saturday School? And, and like, maybe we just keep that in there so that it's an option we could throw in later, or is it?
We, I don't know if they've done it for a few years, but to be honest with you, it is a, it is a nice opportunity to provide learners additional time when they need additional time.
Okay. So, so you leave it in there in case you want to pull that out of your back pocket later?
We've used it. It, it's probably been a couple of years, I think, because of some staffing issues and things like that. So, because if you think about it, right, I mean, you, you, mainly, you know, if kids aren't going to class or doing different things, right, they need additional time to do things, and this serves its, its purpose. It actually is pretty good.
I just wanted to make sure it wasn't like, oh, we didn't even know that was in there anymore. Or, you know, like, like, oh, that should have been taken out years ago.
I've actually talked to Mr. Busman and said, gee, do you think we could do that third trimester? It might come in handy.
We actually used it.
There's a really great movie about it.
We actually just use it Saturday, so.
There you go. It's that. So, yeah, Breakfast Club, but we don't, yes. So, yeah. No, we do still, yeah.
Okay. All right.
That's one detail that didn't stick out to me. That's awesome that you, that you keyed in it.
Well, I'm, they're long. I'm surprised I saw it. Um, I think, like, overall, when you look at these policies, like, I think, like, wow, they're really solid, they're really detailed, and, um, yeah, I just think, like, I'm maybe okay with passing the policy and glad I don't have to implement it. have to implement it. It seems like a very taxing process. So anyway, but but they are definitely necessary.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? All right. Seeing none, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt Policy 506 student discipline, Policy 514 bully prohibition policy, and Policy 522 Title IX sex nondiscrimination policy.
Second.
Motion by Doyle, second by Gorman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Our policies are now passed. Our last item is board remarks. I'll start with the student representatives. Do you have anything to add from the meeting thing? Good to talk to you.
I don't have much, but thank you all. It was a good meeting.
I'd like to add that I think this reintroduction reintroduction of the student showcases are amazing. I remember six years ago, I was here for a Lego Robotics presentation and just the nerve-wracking flashcards that I brought to speak to you all and I know just showing off the cool things that we're doing and how people, more than just my fifth grade teacher, wanted to know what we were doing. So that was just super cool. And I just can imagine being in their shoes and how awesome they're feeling. But then I also wanted to send out some condolences to Rodrigo Dooley, a senior at our school who recently had passed away. A service chapter at our school, FCCLA, reached out to the grandparents of Rodrigo, and they responded with a message that I think would be great for all of us to hear. So the last part of their message says, and I quote, "If you'd like to help us, please let other students know about distracted driving and how one second can change multiple people's lives. No parent should have to deal with the loss of someone that has never even had the opportunity to live their life or choose what they wanted to do. Please stay off your phones and pay attention as the consequences of an ill-timed accident can affect both the driver and the victim." Thank you. So that's their message, and I just really thought that was a great one for drivers of all ages to just a good reminder of what is at risk when we have the privilege of driving. Thank you.
Amen. Thanks, Kennedy. Maggie?
Thanks. I thank you, Jason and Jane, and the Finance Committee for your tireless work on the budget alignment. I mean, there's so many big feelings that come into play when these are people in our district, our fellow employees, but also how this affects our student and just the tremendous ripple effect. So thank you for your efforts with it, even though it's such a difficult task. The other thing I just wanted to mention to anyone that's interested, Jason had mentioned this in his Friday notes, not from this previous week, but from the couple of weeks before, about how the high school was starting a program to train a few staff members regarding the use of Narcan, which is a medication that helps oppose opioid overdose. It's something I've been passionate about and I've done some research into some community programs with it. I know I can't really give a whole, like, presentation, but if anyone wanted a 101 lesson on what it is, how it works, and I have demonstration kits and those things, too. This is something that we're definitely the last district in the area to start this. But law enforcement, multiple community members do carry these types of kits, and I'm thankful that you took the initiative and have it here, too.
Hannah?
We'll just echo what Maggie shared about all of the hard work by the administration, buildings, and staff to get to where we are over the last eight months. And on that note, too, just recognizing and acknowledging the difficulty that this places not only on the programs or staff or positions affected directly, but also everyone in their building, people who have relationships. And we're we've heard from staff, and I just want to continue to thank them for their emails and their messages and for reaching out to let us know because we are we are never forgetting the humans on the other end of the work that we do, both staff and learners. And so thank you for being transparent with us. Thank you for sharing us sharing with us honestly what you're feeling and experiencing. And thank you also for continuing to be hopeful and optimistic and kind of balance where we're at with the incredible energy and passion that you bring into our classrooms and buildings for our learners every day. And I think that is all that I have for this evening.
Thanks, Hannah. Melissa?
So I I just wanted to say thank you to our learners showcase tonight. That was very exciting. I actually took one of the handouts from the soccer team in the cave, and I'm really excited to look through it. I actually remember this story from the news, but just to hear from their perspective will be really, really fun. Also, thank you, Jason, for responding to my lengthy questionable emails very last minute. I know I don't expect anyone to look at anything over a weekend, but thank you for responding today. And just to kind of mirror what Maggie and Hannah has said, this this is a difficult decision when there are lives and people that we're actually dealing with here. This is their livelihood, this is their paycheck, this is how they get by every day. So it is a difficult decision, but cuts do have to be made and it's it's got to be someplace and someone usually. So but thank you for the administration for working on the budget prior to my arrival and Becky's arrival and Maggie's arrival. So to get us to where we are today, it made it a little easier for us to really understand where you were coming from. So thank you.
Jacqueline?
First, I just want to say congrats to the Blazing Cats because that's awesome. Like, I love hearing about all the awesome things that they do. And then our student school members mentioned prom and seniors, and it just boggles my mind that we have, like, once we come back from break, there are like two months left. And so that is crazy. But I do hope everyone enjoys their spring break. I feel like it's always much needed time to relax and recharge because then it's like the long haul until the end of the year. And it's a busy, busy time. I really appreciated, obviously, all of our student learners. I got a proud mom moment for mine here. So but also nice to hear about what other students in the school are doing along with my own kiddos. And just also hearing about what 917 does. I've worked with a lot of the teachers in 917, and it's just awesome that all of the school districts come together and we can collaborate and offer services that our learners definitely need. Otherwise, I, yeah, otherwise I'll just be repeating what others have said. So that's what I got.
Becky?
All right. Well, I'm going to start off by saying I'm sure everyone is looking forward to spring break coming up, and it's neat to hear the different things going on in each building as like, you know, it's the week before spring break, so students get kind of squirrely and excited and the weather's getting nice. So like to hear about the middle school dress up days and, you know, just those fun things. I'm looking forward to the North Trail Elementary Read-a-thon. And so I hope like principals and PTPs and stuff, they continue to let the board know about these events because it's a great, like, I try to take opportunities to get to the schools whenever I'm invited like that. I really do appreciate that. So, yeah, thanks for making the the last week before spring break fun. And then I just wanted to also, in my closing comments, recognize that, I don't know, just talk about legislation and with like, we were talking about 3,000 bills, over 3,000 bills is ridiculous. So but I am going to reach out to my legislators again to say, like, please pass at least the 100 covering 100% of our special education costs so we can eliminate our cross subsidy. I think like, it's like, there's so many bills, I don't even know which one to like talk about without making the correspondence like forever long, but I'm like, well, maybe that's the one that I'll be like the hill to die on. So anyway, I hope our community members will do likewise and reach out.
I want to, when I think about the things for the legislative stuff, I kind of think about it, and I'm sorry if this is funnier than it, well, it's funny because I think about it as you had just one job. And we started this and we thought the special education cross subsidy would be the one thing that they would really zero in on. And and, you know, you had one job, and then you look at what sort of transpired in the last two months and you're like, where did this go wrong? But anyway, yeah, thanks. Please do reach out to them and and some of their colleagues, too. Yeah, the the decision on the budget stuff is is very difficult, but as you noted, Jason, I mean, this has been about six months, I think, of work. And and the the effort that the administrative team and Jacqueline and Steve Carrero started last year on the finance team, kind of guiding us through some of the different parameters. I think it's been a healthy process, even for Hannah, myself, too, to actually dig into that budget in ways that we really hadn't in different ways. So very good stuff. I had a really great experience outside of that. Last week, I went to the North Trail Elementary Wax Museum on Friday. And if you guys haven't done a wax museum at at one of the elementary schools, did they do that at at Fermington Elementary, too? I think I saw that on.
My favorite.
Yeah, well, I've seen a couple, and they're the coolest things ever. My 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 kids were Joshua's Jackie Robinson, and so I sat next to the Jackie Robinson kid. I said, okay, well, you got big shoes to fill because not only do you have to be Jackie Robinson, but you gotta be Jackie Robinson better than my oldest son. And and I think he gave him a pretty good run for his money. But there was some really great stuff I learned. I learned about Betsy Ross, things I didn't know about Betsy Ross. I learned about Amelia Earhart and and others, too. It was just really fun because those kids, I know the the teachers go through an enormous amount of work to get those things ready. And it, again, it brings the learning to life and the kids are excited, and it's just a lot of fun. Yeah, two two more of these meetings before graduation, so not to not to trump the spring break thing, but that's that's really it. The the school year here has gone really quickly, and it is continuing to go quickly. So I'll I'll stop talking now. I'm just I'm I'm excited for my own spring break getaway this this starting this weekend, and and I hope everybody has a good break off break away or time away until you get back. We don't meet again until the end of April. So thanks for all of your hard work, students. Thanks for your bringing your perspectives to the table, too. And especially over the last couple of months, we've dealt with some pretty heavy issues. So thank you. It's it's a it's it's a very much a big value add for for this board to to hear from the both of you. Okay. So with that, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting at 6:49.
Second.
Motion by Doyle, second by Simmons. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Our meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.